The edition of the Glen Rock Independent released on March 26, 2015, relays information from that Monday's Glen Rock Town Council meeting. In the interest of fairness and transparency, what follows is a recording of the portion of that meeting represented in the newspaper article. This is only a portion of that meeting, ranging from nine minutes and 30 seconds to 39 minutes and 22 seconds. This recording has not otherwise been edited, and the full recording may be made available upon request through the Glen Rock Town Council. Town Council meetings are a matter of public record, and any minutes, copies of documents or recordings must be provided upon public request.
About 29 bucks an hour to 50 bucks an hour. So it's an expensive thing for us, so managing that part of our business is important. I have a little thing I'd like to read and kind of go over with you all, because I think it's pertinent to maybe some of the reasons some of you are here, and certainly pertinent to how I feel at this time in this great position. At our last council meeting, we enjoyed some public comments from our former mayor, Dills, regarding the manner of how I'm handling my administrative responsibilities, those that are required of me, and those that result from what this job does in a mayor council form of government, resulting from the election last fall. As I said at that time, and I will repeat now, my confidential conversations with town appointees, employees, will from my perspective be held confidential as a result of the commitment I made to various parties when I had those conversations. Let me back up a little and bring some perspective to all of this. Since my wife and I chose to make Glen Rock home about halfway through our third year now, accused of being a rookie, but we're going on our third year, we've had the privilege of making many friends, many acquaintances. We've made friends with our teachers, our school board, our county commissioners, local area business people, mine workers, power plant employees, local area ranchers, hunters, outfitters. I'd say we're blessed to have met as many people as we have since we've been here. And I'd say that the people that we've met and spoken to in great detail, or that I've met and spoken in great detail these years, have helped me form an impression of the things that we can continue to improve upon here in our great town. Last year, we hosted at the Higgins Hotel candidate forums for the community that consisted of a number of candidates for state office. That gave us even, and gave me a greater opportunity to build some relationships even at the state level. At the very least, I have made it my priority to be a community-oriented person long before I ran for mayor. I think I've done that, and the effort paid off last fall when I won the mayor election by about 170 votes. Backing up from that moment, I can tell you that that was a very difficult decision to run on the last day of filing for the office, is when I chose to run for mayor. Why? I ask myself about every night now. All I can tell you is I felt the town needed new leadership. Obviously, a lot of people agreed with me, and that much could be accomplished, and was encouraged to do so by willing electorate. I'm not a federal employee. I don't enjoy the luxury of a Teflon distance in my job. Both my real estate business and our hotel business is dependent upon the goodwill of this community, and without it, our business will not succeed. I'm not married to anybody that works for the town. I'm not encumbered by someone that gets a paycheck from the taxpayers either. I don't have a job that allows me to sit in an office all day, every day, and take a paycheck from people in the process. Rather, I get to spend as many hours as I can muster from my otherwise busy schedule to do the people's work, although my $400 monthly stipend is some consideration of those efforts from the end of the month goes around. I do enjoy getting that check. So when I tell you my motivation to do the best that I can for our citizens and taxpayers comes with great risk and responsibility, I mean it. Pardon me. I basically stake my personal reputation and the well-being of my business activities and that of my family on how I choose to serve you and the importance that you, the voters, chose me to fulfill. Last year, I came into these chambers alone essentially, but not unsupported by the public, to talk about the granting of a lease in favor of then-current mayor and her husband, Deed Restricted Dedicated Park Land. That would continue to convey a financial benefit to them that I believe was unprecedented. I then sat and watched as this body, Dennis Westman here, approved a new 20-year lease for a dollar a year to allow this questionable usage to continue. No accounting for the restriction of the deed, no accounting for the rental profits that have been gained, and would continue to be gained by the former mayor and husband for the next 20 years. Just unanimous support for a new 20-year, $1 a month, $1 a year lease in place of an improper deal made back in the 60s, and a 10-year out-of-date lease to boot. I mean, this thing was out of lease, there was no current lease existing. Nothing, just amazing to me. The original deed reads as such. "This deed is given with the understanding that the premises herein were conveyed were at one time a part of the site of the Old Pony Express Station on the Oregon Trail, and this deed is given to the said town of Glen Rock with the understanding and agreement that the premises shall be constituted public park and a monument shall be erected there on to mark the site of said Pony Express Station." Now, I realize that this problem got created some years ago, but I stood here alone, not for my own self-interest, tried to stick up for something that I thought was improper. Made my point known, unanimous vote, 20-year lease, dollar a year, everything's good. And we do have the right to buy their improvements back if they moved on to that property when the lease expires. Fast forward a couple of weeks from that moment, I come across a couple of employees of our Public Works Department attaching "No Dogs Allowed" in the park signs at the entrance to the park at the back of the hotel where we live. I asked them why. They didn't know, they were just told to put them up. A day later, I believe, during a meeting with our town clerk, Donna Gio, I asked to see the ordinance related to the "No Dogs in the Park" issue, and told that there was no such ordinance. Surprised by this, I asked our clerk and our director of Public Works, how, where did these signs come from then? Neither of them had any knowledge of this, and I believe they were sincere. They were surprised that somebody had put up new signs. So who would it have been? I was later told that the mayor and her husband, our assistant public works director, were quite irritated with my questioning of the park lease adjacent to their house. So much for an inappropriate chain of command, true conflict of interest, and so much for me trying to convince many in town that their protest would not meet with some retaliatory effort. It's been an ongoing problem that I've heard about from people in this town, because they're afraid to come in here and take a position because they're afraid they're going to get retaliated against. I went through similar issues regarding the then-mayor's involvement in the job description for our new public works director and his subsequent hiring process, none of which happened without me having to stand before this body and ask for their consideration. I attended council meetings last year before the general election, where the meeting was called to order, and then the mayor made campaign speeches. We were able to enjoy a council, I was able to sit here and enjoy after the meeting was open, a council member announcing being a private citizen at that point for this or that. I don't remember all this stuff. Ridiculous things that shouldn't happen. Since I've been in office, we have had to reestablish the overtime policy called for by town ordinance and state law. It was not being enforced properly. Ignored and abused during the last two years prior to being least, becoming mayor. We have an exempt employee contrary to policy and law that tracks and uses comp time regardless of the law and policy regarding it. By the way, questions regarding my lawful requirement to appoint certain people that serve the interests of this town, such as the town clerk, the police chief, the planner, our municipal judge. Funny thing about that. I was elected to the office of mayor and had absolutely nobody wanting to help me transition into that office.
I take exception with that.
You can, I'll give you a minute to do that. So, you know, I showed up, actually, the state law says that the elected official's supposed to be sworn in the first of the month of January, but I let the next meeting happen, and referred to whatever codebooks, our website, as to what the lawful requirement were with regards to my appointment. And the only evidence, the only policy evidence was that the mayor had to make such appointments almost immediately in January after the office was taken. It was with this directive in mind that I had some important conversations with several in the employ of our town, while it turned out to be a little bit of a false alarm. We've since discovered the presence of at least two versions of this ordinance that direct that these appointments occur on the first day of July, one fiscal year, or before. Actually, the current iteration, which says those appointments should be made on or before the first meeting of July. You see, I had an offer from no one to help me transition into this job, so I did the best I could with the information that I had. While it was a true ordinance regarding these important matters, not an evidence, I don't know the answer to. At the end of the day, I can promise you I will do my best to do the will of the people, the citizens and taxpayers of Glen Rock. What other possible motivation could I have? I'm risking my livelihood, my reputation, everything on doing the right thing. You know, I hear people talk all the time about our bloated federal government bureaucracy that we do. Why would we want to do that here? The election was pretty darn clear. In spite of this rookie status proclaimed by some, I was elected by a pretty clear margin. The rest of our election? Well, the top vote getter was Councilman Flynn, who campaigned on, I asked you, Dennis, to confirm it, whatever the voters, taxpayers want. He won top vote getter by 20 votes amidst a field of four candidates for two seats, including one incumbent. How did the other three candidates fare? Well, the votes were pretty evenly split amongst newcomers in the primary and the incumbent, and in the general, second-highest vote getter was a tie between an incumbent councilman, arguably one of the most honest but grouchy long-term residents of our town, who subsequently lost that tie in a tie-breaking session held privately by the county election commission. I accept that as valid. What was the message of the voters in that election? Do the will of the people. You tell me if it's different. I chose to regard the voter's strong majority from the election in many conversations that I have had with our interested residents on a daily basis as a reminder of my responsibility to you, the citizens and taxpayers. Others may choose to wield their power in a different contradiction to what our residents want and need. I hope not, but we have a silent majority in this town that may complain to me, may complain to them, and they don't want to go in there and talk. Speak up, communicate with all of us, email, phone us in person, talk to us in person. I can tell you firsthand, we need your input and we need your action. We are a business like any other business that needs the support of its constituents to operate. Our business practices should pass that scrutiny. Thank you. I'll go.
Now, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
I do take the exception with that. I believe I came in, and I think it was Tuesday or Thursday after you took office, after your top-secret conversation, and I asked you, and you can correct me in this, to slow down, to take some time to learn us as a council, to learn the employees at the town, and find out the workings before making any drastic change. And I said in that meeting that you had my commitment to make that transition, and that I offered to do anything I needed to do to help you find ordinances that you said were gone, or any other information that you needed to make that transition. I did not know that it had not been done before, but I offered my services to you to make that transition smoothly.
And you're absolutely fair. You did do that after I was sworn in. You're right. I appreciate that. You're right.
But since that, even though I offered it, he has never come to the council and asked for help. He's never come other than to dictate the policies that he wants to make and to remind us constantly of the 170 votes that he got. He really, the mayor comes across as if the rest of us were not elected to these positions. So it does frustrate me that he comes and he complains about our mayor before campaigning, and he gets on a soapbox. I'd ask in the future-
I'm not campaigning for him.
-but you're on a soapbox. So we got a history lesson-
One of the few benefits that comes with a job.
...and your resume, all in one sitting. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll address your stuff in court, is what I will do for the slander that you have done to me and my husband.
I can, I just have a couple things to say. Park signs on the dogs, "No Dogs Allowed" on the park. I've seen those signs on Kimball Park for over eight or 10 years. Even, they've been, whether they've been there constantly, I can't tell you, but I know that there's been "No Dogs Allowed" on the signs on all three entrances to that park, at least.
Not the two entrances near the hotel. I watched the guys put them up.
Well, I know there was one there, but the main one, both of them line up to go to the gazebo, always had one that said "No Dogs Allowed" on the park. I can tell you that.
There's no ordinance that supports it.
Well, I don't know why they're there. I can just tell you that-
We can go back to what Kimball included for that park, and I bet it's in there.
That's what it is.
It might be, I don't know. I can just tell you that they've been there.
I know. There were, you're right, there were other signs. The ones that were put up for my benefit was where my little dog and I go out. We've actually policed the park and pick up after other dogs that violate that rule, which we know now.
And the other thing we did before, when you were mayor-elect, we did, as a whole council, when Randy was hired, and when we were doing interviews and trying to select a new public works director, we did make a motion to bring you in on those. We had a very large discussion here that night in that council meeting that there should have been more transition for you. I didn't realize that there hadn't been. I've seen transition work in the past between several mayors and other mayor's committees, but we felt that you needed to be in on that, and we made that decision. We all, for us here at this time, made that work. And John also felt that you should be in on those and that, so we were trying to make that a better transition.
And I also, and Bruce, I know that's true as well. I know that you did make that effort.
And if there needs to be a better effort at that, anytime there's a transition, I think. I think our past clerk, personal feelings set aside by anybody, I think she has worked with more mayors and more council and the people than anybody, and she's been very open and gave everybody and anybody any information that you asked for. It's all there in public record, and if you asked her for information, she would get it out for you and find it for you. It may take a little bit to get, but she always worked with, was always beneficial and helpful to all councils and all the mayors who have gotten the last one in the year. And I've worked with her twice here, times three.
And she and I had some very good discussions about that very thing. So I was on the council 20 years ago.
And the only thing I'd like to say is it's just getting difficult and more difficult to move forward when we seem to have these speeches nonstop about, you know, disparaging about town employees or the council, or former mayors, or former clerk, and just, you know, to respond to anything specifically. It's not that, you know, you can rest on your laurels and sit here and say everything's perfect. There's things that, you know, we can all do, and that's why we run, and that's why we are here, but to just have such an arrogant, disparaging tone to everyone that you meet, I think is, it just crosses the line all the time, and, you know. That's all I'll say about that.
Fair enough. Okay. Let's move on to our public section and public comments. Is there anybody who would like to be recognized? Okay. Please introduce yourself, state your business.
Jim Chell. I'm here representing the town of Glen Rock, committee, and I'd like to defer this discussion until all and after Donnie Skidon with his stuff about some, about the section or number center of the six cent sales tax. Would be more appropriate to talk about it than I would say.
You mean still tonight after?
Yeah. After Donnie's done, I'd like to have time with him for it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Mary Katie, and I'm here to represent the Deer Creek Days Committee. I'm Deer Creek Days chairperson. Yeah, anyway, last year there was-
Why are you ducking?
Huh? Why are you ducking? I don't know. We're throwing arrows around. Like, does anybody like anybody in this room? Made me a little nervous.
I like you.
I got ate alive on Facebook, so I know how you guys feel. Anyway, I'm here because last year there was money budgeted for the restrooms at the town park. With Deer Creek Days, we've been getting requests for bids, to submit bids for the porta-potties and stuff, and I just, we just kind of need to know where we stand and what we need to do with that. So I do apologize, I went back and looked at some minutes and stuff and didn't see anything. I overlooked, I don't know. So I'm just asking you where we stand with that.
Mary Katie, can we look into it unless somebody remembers?
I thought it was something we added specifically because of the expediency. It wasn't on the agenda, but you came to us, and we worked that far out from Deer Creek Day. We wanted to make sure that that happened, so I think we made a-
We had $25,000 that we set aside in the budget for engineering and planning for new restrooms in the town parks because of those-
Because of the use of the porta-potties and the ACLU-
And we don't know-
People using long-term-
Probably with the doors on the bathrooms.
And the septic and everything else, because we know that needs to be replaced down there.
Yeah, that building, that totally needs rebuilt, but it's gonna have to be porta-johns again, and one's gonna have to be a handicap one, but I would say get bids on and let us know what it comes in as, and we'll go forth as we always have.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Are we still at the $25,000?
Well, there was money-
We budgeted $25,000-
To have it looked at.
To have engineering done.
To take that old joint concession stand of bathrooms, filling down, build a new one, some more modern, convenient, maybe ADA for the bathrooms inside, take up the sewer that comes out there, because it's supposed to be tight in the sewer down there, but we're not very sure where it goes.
But I mean, hasn't that been done, Bruce?
No, I'm sure-
We, that needs, that started.
Okay.
My name's Orby Stone King. I'm here to question the decision not to reappoint the police chief. I for one can vouch for everything he's done for us. I think he goes above and beyond. You may get people in here that you're thinking that education will supplement, education will supplement, but there's no replacement for experience. Sweet knows what's going on, he knows the people, he's more than qualified to do the job, and he has something that we need. He has the want to do the job. He's not just a police chief, that's what he is, that's what he does. He's got his police force tuned to the idea that their job is to protect and to serve the people, to keep the peace, and that's what they do. They don't run around trying to meet quotas and harass people. Most people consider the Glen Rock Police their friends. When they're in trouble, they know who they can come to, they know who they can count on. I'm not sure that you can get that by picking on something else. I've been in a lot of oilfield towns, I railroaded for 40 years, and the railroad is notorious for sticking you in tiny little towns overnight. What I've seen is Gestapo, not police force, people that want to flex their muscle and shine their boots, the people that don't care about what happens to the people. I'd be willing to bet you Sweet knows more first names than most of you guys do. What I'm asking is take some time in your work sessions as a council, discuss this with the mayor, and rethink this decision. We can't afford to lose any more experience than we've already lost, and I can't, I just can't say enough for what he's done for Roman Hills and the town of Glen Rock. Please take that into consideration. Don't lose this experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, but I would like to make sure you understand that that is not a council, or it's a council decision in the end, but that is not a decision-
Well, I realize that it's not your decision.
Oh, it is our decision ultimately, but-
In these work sessions, maybe you can find some time for a change of heart and put in a few of the things that we know have happened here. When you come down to Deer Creek Days, Deer Creek Days is not Glen Rock. They come from everywhere because they know they can come down here and enjoy themselves, and yes, they will be policed, but they won't be harassed. There's a big difference. These guys know us. They're what we want, they're what we need. Please don't make this mistake. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kim Edros. I've been here, this is my first meeting, I've been here 40 minutes, and all I can say is, wow. I walked in and, I don't know any of you, I know Bruce because he's done some work for me, but anybody else, I don't know, and I can see the animosity on everybody's faces, just the disrespect you guys have for each other. We're not perfect, we're all going to disagree, but the faces just watching you guys, I don't even, I'm just kind of stunned that it's, one'll talk, the rest will shake their hand. It's obvious, we're in big trouble unless we can pull this together, and change happens, sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. That's why we vote.
I appreciate your comments.
Good luck. I hope we can pull this all together and work together.
Truly appreciate your comments, and I think we'll work it out. I really think-
I hope so. I just was kind of stunned.
Me too. Anyone else? Sir?
Mostly, I want to direct this-
Excuse me. Could you introduce yourself to the caller?
I live at Birdstone King.
And where do you live?
I live out on 52 acres out past Roman Hill.
Okay.
And I just moved out there. I moved here from Oklahoma City. I'm a retired truck driver. When I was a truck driver, I ran over the road. I ran the 48 states and Canada, been to a lot of cities, big cities, little cities. I've also spent a little bit of time as a chairman of the board on a township, so I know a little bit about what problems that you have and how difficult they can be. Now, this little lady that just got up here, she was pouring it out from her heart. She's telling you what she saw and what she thought. Okay, I want to get it a little bit tighter, because I've been there and I've done that, been to big cities, saw what happens there, been in little cities. Guess what? I moved back here. I've been in New York, I've been in Detroit, I've been in LA, I've been in Dallas, I moved back here. I don't live in Glen Rock, but my bank is in Glen Rock, I buy my groceries in Glen Rock, I buy my gasoline here, so most of what I do, my business, is done in Glen Rock. Now, the reason that I do that is because when I came back here, what I saw is people with iconic faces. You walked into your business, and it wasn't, "I can't," it's, "What can I do for you?" Nice old city, nice place to come back to. I was born and raised in Wyoming. And when I came into this meeting tonight, I'm listening to what she just told you. When I came into this meeting tonight, I saw a mayor that got up on a soapbox, and it ain't no doubt that you got up on your soapbox, and you talked about all the things that you have done. Nice to be king, huh? You were elected. You're not king, you were elected, and you had to deal with these people. You have to deal with the people in the city of Glen Rock. Are you ready? You elected to do this.
You're not from the city of Glen Rock, so-
I just told you-
Your advice is nicely-
Mr. Mayor, except for mayor, I have the floor.
No, I determine who has the floor, so I want to make your point.
Nice to be king, isn't it?
It is.
Nice to be king.
Why don't you make your point?
I did make my point, and you just made it, you just, what you just said made my point irrelevant. It is not. I do my business in Glen Rock. I come through Glen Rock to do that particular thing because I see smiling faces. You changed that, Mr. Mayor, and I will avoid coming to Glen Rock. Thank you very much.
I hope you change your mind about that.
No, you will change my mind. I just told you, you will change my mind.
I urge you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I appreciate everybody's comments, and we'll move on to our whole business. We have a resolution for the 2015 through, oh, Resolution 2015-07 with regards to the Let me read the resolution. "Resolution Improving Increases of Fees Charged to Glen Rock Cemetery District for Opening and Closing. Whereas the Glen Rock Cemetery District does not have the equipment necessary to dig large holes, and whereas the Glen Rock Cemetery District wishes to secure the assistance of the town of Glen Rock to perform these services, and whereas it is the responsibility of the governing body to ensure that the town charges an amount for these services sufficient to cover the costs without putting additional financial stress on the bereaved family member. Now therefore be it resolved, Glen Rock Town Council hereby sets the fee for these services at the amount of $300 to become effective July 1, 2015. Passed, approved, and adopted this 23rd day of March, 2015, Town of Glen Rock."
I'll make a motion, we improve Resolution 2015-07.
Yes, sir.
Discussion of this, because we had a work session about it, and we, you know, we booted around, we've charged a pretty low number for a lot of years, and it became pretty clear we weren't covering our costs to do so, and this is the number we arrived at. Anybody?
Randy, what did, with your meeting with the cemetery ward, what was their feeling regarding that?
They understood the reason I was pursuing this, and they were-
They understood the reasoning, I was pursuing this, and they were, I guess, pretty happy that it wasn't four hundred dollars, and they accepted the three hundred, and they didn't have a problem with it, and I told them the date of the start was July first, so, yeah, they're on board with it. Nice, a bunch of nice people on the board there.
Okay. Motion is on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you, that motion passes.